我们是站在这里这片土地的一部分， 这些河流流过的地方的一部分， 我们是这些梦想的故事中的一部分， 会给未来的孩子们创造一个美好的未来。你已经到达了天堂。谢谢你。
This is a really complicated, complex matter that the City of Weyallah has been asked to lead and coordinate on behalf of multiple stakeholders. From residents through to those that interact with the cuttlefish themselves by way of commercial entities. With that many stakeholders involved, it's a difficult game to be the lead and the coordinator on. And it's required extraordinary circumstances and assistance from experts to push this project forward. And it's been really worthwhile to date. But as you'll hear from Greg from Brave and Curious, it's a complex set of circumstances that have really changed over the last two years. Due to increased visitation, from down to as low as 1500 visitors used to attend the site at Stony Point and Black Point and Point Lowly. And now we're approaching the 6000 visitation mark with projected increases around the 15 to 20% year on year. Last season and the season before, it was evident that the increased visitation was introducing unacceptable risks on site for public safety and environmental impacts. As a result of the limited controls via landscape engineering and car parking out on site. At the conclusion of last season, every vendor involved and a number of visitors involved passed on their concerns about the condition of the site and its ability to withstand this kind of increased growth and intense pressure as each year comes by. And council's found itself in the position to lead this work. So I won't talk for much longer. I'm happy to come in and ask some more questions, but I just wanted to introduce Greg from Brave and Curious. A company that the state government referred Stony Point, Black Point and Point Lowly in their capable hands due to their experience working in national parks and really highly environmentally ecologically significant sites. So I'll hand over to Greg and happy to take questions later.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Jay. Everyone hear me okay? I'll speak pretty loud. I'll try and speak. I'd like to, uh, bungle up people. I haven't met up with the club yet, but I'm looking forward to that. I'm the chairman of Zeland and I'm seated area. So we look forward to working on their country and learning from them as well too. I'm the mayor, CEO and councillors, thank you, and the community members. Thanks for coming along. But yeah, we'll go to the next slide. But yeah, just a little bit about who in the heck are us? We've got a group of people here who are designers, collaborators, strategists that have collaborated. Collaborators, strategies to the collaborators as well as tourism. So we're dealing with a tourism visitor opportunity here. But we're also dealing like this highly complex because of the ecosystem we're working with as well too. So we want to look after these little critters while we're also got visitors coming along as well too. So we've got a good mix of people on the project sort of lead on this. So, um, but we've got Dr. Holly, who's over in WA. But Joe, who's a colleague of mine, is an architect. We've got Chris Halsted, who's spent 30 odd years in the park and does tourism. We've got economists as well as Natasha, who is part of the tourism side of things as well too. They've all got little bits of roles in this, but they're very important to getting what we need to get over this project and fairly quickly really. So we'll talk about the next, next slide. Thanks. I wanted to talk about the bigger picture that we're dealing with. And it was quite rightly said before about the dot that hole for sure. So we've got that in mind when we're talking about this project. This site doesn't sit by itself. It sits within a bigger context. And hopefully what we do here is influenced from the bigger context and vice versa. This will influence that as well too. So we're thinking about how this sort of works together in the whole Fitzgerald Bay sort of area and that. So we're starting off with stakeholder engagement. We just started just before Christmas, so we quickly looked at the short term plan for this thing to go forward. But we've got to start proper big term stakeholder engagement starting in March. So we'll start to get big groups together and looking at the bigger process. There'll be cultural environment assessments, concept plan development from this. These are the big things that the city has got to come together with as well too. We definitely got to look at the visitor management and safety. This is a big thing that's driving this at the moment. Some real issues out there. While we're looking at the safety of the cuttlefish world, people, girls. Then the economic sustainability. We've got a really good opportunity here with this project for Wayala. But again, we've got a really, it just doesn't just happen. It could, it could be just people, you could have vendors going away with the money taken off again. We want to start to look at how this actually benefits Wayala and becomes an economic opportunity that boosts. And brings people into Wayala itself as well too. It's not just one of those things that happens out there. Does that make sense? That's a big, big issue here. Monitoring and evaluation. So we're going to be learning over time what happens each year. This thing is developed. This has got to be based in science and, and, and also acknowledging seeing what we're doing. So the design won't actually happen stuff like that. It'll actually happen from learning as well too. And then a bigger, broader community engagement and education as we go as well too. As we learn things. We start sharing and then there'll be a two-way sharing as well too as we go forward. So that's the bigger sort of governance context and planning. We're going to be doing parts of that, but this is where the city's got to fit in and have got to get all that stuff together. So it's a big, complex project, but it's fun. I love that. Still dealing with a lot of those projects across Australia and we're having fun. But yeah, excellent. Thanks. So our approach is three steps. We're at step one at the moment and that's the short term plan. And the approach is collaborative. So we've got to, we have already been talking to key stakeholders already, the vendors, people who use the site. But as we said in March, we're going out to a lot more people. So we look forward to that and learn. And we've already learnt so much from the vendors and people who live in that area and the people that use that area, diving and all that sort of stuff about what we're doing. So again, we don't do things by what we think should be done. We do things by learning what should be done out there and we start putting it together. So, and then we start working on the bigger visitor infrastructure. So what happens? How we share the love over the whole cuttlefish drive area. It doesn't just happen at Stony Point. Stony Point obviously has been a sacrificial area at the moment because it's got, it's got the oil, it's got the, you know, some infrastructure there. But it's, it's a whole area. It's a beautiful area. And this is a nature-based opportunity. It's not a, it's. You've got the hub, gas hub and everything next door. There's, there's spreading out along the coast here. The nature base is amazing. What the sort of things you can get going on there. Another project I was working on was Muriduga, which is over on a lot of other large gas hub over in, off Karatha there. I know that one where the old sort of petrol grifts are and that with the mob. And again, very similar outcome, but it's a very nature-based outcome. And it became one of the 100, yeah, 100 national parks for WA. So a very similar project and it's going really well. Next one. Thanks. So coming down, we're looking, this is probably the key area that we're looking at, even though we're looking further up. Into Fitzgerald Bay, Stony Point, White Hole, Black Point, Point Lowly, some of the key points. It's where the cuttlefish aggregate and learning from a lot of research already. And just even ring, just speaking to Dr. Michael Steer just before he's done most of the research on this stuff. The cuttlefish come here aggregate because of the type of formulary you go to the water with the rocks and stuff like that when they get in. But it's also the, um, the temperature at the time of year. It's at 18 degrees. That's what brings them together. Gets them all, I don't know what's right for them. Come on, figure it out. Excited. That's a great way. Get some excited at that. And that's the point where it happens. It usually happens in May and culminates in June. And then from that, the water gets warmer again, which is really good because then that's, that's what sets the eggs and then they go off and they actually breed. It's got to get warm again. If it stays cold for long, it actually is a bad season. So you're learning all the time. There's got to be this thing that happens that this, this, this happens. They're not so much affected by noise and stuff like that, but they're still learning. We've got to do research and all that stuff. If they were, if they were coming in already, would be amazing effect on them. But apparently they're just, they're getting, the numbers have become increasing and increasing at the moment. So we've, but we've got to learn all these things about what's happening with these, these things. Because the last thing we want is to affect what's going on. How many visitors are there? How many times? How many people do they want staring down at them while things are going on? So it's just too much, you know what I mean? Or, or flipping and flopping around. So we've got to learn all this. It's exciting though. That's, and as we learn, we'll share. We'll share what's coming on. So everyone understands there's not, there's not going to be that sort of information out there that people don't know things about. We want to share that information as we go. Next one. Thanks. So at the moment, very quickly, like you said, we, we want to get something done for this, this season. And it looks like it's going to be quite man-based, what we're going to do. So up there is a short-term plan. Probably we'll go from the top. The biggest thing is to start to control what happens with the, or formalize what happens with the vehicles out there. I don't know if you've been out there when it gets pretty excited in the water, but it gets pretty excited on the land as well too. And there's cars everywhere. There's not, and, and it'll come a point where it'll get violent. It's all very, very dangerous. People trying to park and people, then pedestrians going down the side. The idea is that we park people off of the site now and we park them away from the foreshore as well too. So no sediment issues and all that sort of stuff. And we get them walk down the fence line so they're protected from the cars and stuff like that. And they walk into this site. A big thing about this, let's start to think of this as probably as an event to the event that happened to the water, but it's a big dog approach that happens on land as well for three months, four months of the year. And, and we set the site up like an event. So we put up marquees, we put up toilets, we get all these things to happen for this event. So that's the approach that we're having at this point. And it all gets pulled down again and, and it's natural basic as well too. So no big infrastructure at the moment. The car park, probably the biggest thing. Start to think about how do we, we do vehicles out there. We start talking about caravans, which someone brought out before. It's a big thing now. Caravans, off-road caravans park everywhere. I'm working on another one at the moment. This parking right now, the closer to the cliff you can get, the better, you know, type thing. You can get those shots. They're going to be parking all up and down this place and they already are. So, and there's culturally protected. There's also geological protected places. And then there we've got to start protecting as well as this area as well too. So what do we do with caravans and stuff like that? So the idea that this, when this event's happening, maybe we start parking caravans at Point Lowly and we get a cuddle shuttle, something like that. Getting people into this place a lot more safe and things like that. So we're going to start to think, if it's a rock, you know, that's the sort of stuff that happens, you know, at an event. So we've got to think along those sort of lines. Does that make sense to everyone, that sort of approach? Yeah. Again, it's not trying to build 100 car parking spaces for just three months. It's about, we've got 30 car park spaces there. We understand how many people use the site. Down the fact there's going to be more and more, but we're going to spread out the love along this place as well too, you know? So let's not go overboard. Just start to think about doing this really well. Good. The next steps is we're going to try and get the land-based side of this thing built as quickly as we can. So we actually get a bit of safety at the front of this, especially on the land side of this stuff going this season. And like an event, we've got to have someone that manages the land stuff. So people start to coordinate how people are parking and stuff like that. And on the marine side of things, we start to coordinate like a surf life-saving club type thing, swim between the flags. The idea that you actually have boats here and people swimming and snorkeling and diving here. So we start to set up those sort of situations. At the moment, there's people flip flopping around, coming in, skidding in and, and then just going off. We're going to try and start to designate those sort of things and get them a lot better. And have sacrificial areas where these things happen. So that's the thing. We've got to get the short-term plan going. We're going to start in March, the bigger planning of this, this whole bigger area. We're going to start to talk to a lot of groups about that sort of side of things. It's really exciting. This is a great opportunity for Wayala. So we want to work with you guys together and understand what the economic opportunities, the environmental opportunities. And looking out for this place can be without ruining it for all, for the, for the cuttlefish, all for, all for Wayala. It's a great chance. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Greg? Take advantage of his knowledge that has all. We've got an economic feasibility now, so we've got to work what that will be. We've got to leverage to it to be as much as it can be. Again, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So there's been grants that are helping out going towards this at the moment, getting things going. But the idea is to, so at the moment vendors go in there and use it at their will and no money comes back. That's got to stop. That sort of stuff's got to change and, and they'll be the first. Yes, that's, yeah. But, but also people in the community are as well too. So yeah, the cuddle shuttle can come from the city and start to set up what happens from there. So you start to have that connection back to the city again. So all these things link back to town again. Yeah. Instead of driving out there, like if I'm not driving all the time, which is good, you start, yeah, that's right. You start to make money. But you also make money getting people back into town again. So that the whole event actually happens, starts in town. It doesn't have to start out there. See the difference? You, you actually start to think of the town as part of the cuddle, cuddle business. Yeah.
Yes, on board. Thank you so much, Greg, for your presentation. And that really does give a good picture. And I'm, I'm personally really happy to see that you're approaching from a point of view of the dive site, but also bringing it back to town. Exactly what you were saying there. And I have a major concern though about the effect that the works at this exact moment are going to have on the cuttlefish. Are you in a position with your experience and expertise to categorically say there is no risk to the cuttlefish if work is done as of now? So if we say yes, proceed, is there any chance that there's going to be risk to the cuttlefish?
Well, we had enough mad rush around and asking all the people who've actually got the latest lines on this place. And then again, Dr. Michael Steer has written, you know, the post on this and they, they work with us. And there's lots to learn about cuttlefish, but they're saying at the moment, so you've got a base load of cuttlefish going around, everywhere, swimming around, having fun. And they'll be out at the jetty here and everywhere as well too, and they'll be up there, but they're not doing anything. And they won't do their thing until the, until the water gets to 18 degrees. And that performance, that, that geology and that water there, that is the right thing for when all that happens at the moment. But you're not, you're not affecting anything by doing your work there. This place gets graded three times or four times a year anyway. Every three months it gets graded and worked. We won't be doing any more work in that type of grading thing. You know, it gets graded and rolled and all that sort of stuff. So it's a good time to do the work now before it gets cold. Yeah.
Thank you. Do you think there'd be any benefit in waiting for this season and starting from September this year to have enough time and just remove any doubt that any of us may have?
Um, I definitely with the marine side of things, the studies to happen and, and that's the sort of things that we'll, we'll be doing. Again, we tried to push the marine side of things, getting a little bit more infrastructure down there, getting people safely down there. We've got to work that out a bit more. But the land-based thing, I think it's get something safe and get that, that event style event will, people. It, it will be the quicker way to get people enjoying the experience online and understand that this is a lot better experience, visitor experience than what it's been. It could, if you don't do things soon there, it could get back. People go, oh, this is just a, don't come here. It's scary, you know what I mean? But it's got to become more of a family event. It's got to become more of an opportunity.
Yeah. Now, I'm with you on that. My question more is around the works that are scheduled in for now. Is that, is that sort of stuff that's worse than a greater? Or you were saying though, the stuff that the works have been happening already is as noisy and as risky? If we even call it a risk, as the works that are proposed here.
Yes, that's a very, yep. Again, the noise, we're seeing the study on noise and that, but a lot of it is, is about boat noise and stuff like that. It doesn't talk about those low-impact vibrations. And there was this idea that even the army things that go on at the moment affected. But again, the tech people are saying that's been washed in a way. There's no, none of that noise affects these, these, these. They're quite different or something in some respect.
So just to confirm, so there's research available that says the vibration from close to the excavators, bombs going off, doesn't negatively affect the cuttlefish?
No, no, no. So.
So there is, there is research available that says that?
Yeah. So, so at the moment, the vibrating and all that sort of stuff that it's talking about, it's saying, um, there's no effect on, on the animals at this, this point. Again, they haven't had, it'll be really good to continue the research out there to understand what's going on, especially with the marine side of things, to understand what we're doing. But on, on land there, um, again, no more effect than what's happening with the grading happening every, every, every third month. And vibrating that's happening out there already. Again, it's not big works that's happening and it's actually even further away from what the road is at the front. It's back. Yeah. It's a couple, it's a hundred or a couple of hundred meters back from the foreshore where most of that cutting and everything is happening. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pong, you've got a question?
Yes, I've got a couple. Public consultation. I love your list. I'm very, very big on public consultation. But I did notice that the cuttlefish working group wasn't on there. I think that's a very important group to tap into. The expertise. Their expertise, they've got scientists, they've got people from all varieties of different organisations which would be beneficial.
Thank you.
Also, I just wanted to ask, I did see on there that Emma Richards was going to be the contact for Bungla Corporation?
Oh, yes, that is, we can say that's attractive at, at the moment.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Not a problem because.
Yeah.
Yep.
Again, that was early thoughts and, and, and we've started getting good connections in with Bungla. So thank you for picking that up. And yes, we are working with the working group and in fact I spoke to someone before speaking with the working group. We're setting up really strong reference group, they, they got part of that and the scientists and that, so could pick up.
Lovely. And yeah, my, my next comment with associate Emma is make sure that while Bungla people are involved, you go to Port Lincoln, but if the Weyal issue, you're going to have a problem.
Thank you.
I'll just maybe consider a couple more community representatives. Lots of scientists, fantastic, but we also have a lot of knowledge as well. And I just have one last thing, as I mentioned, Emma. Just thinking about if we could get some more information on those temporary security, how much is that going to cost? Where is that money coming from? I think that is pretty crucial for us making decisions. As someone who requires a lot of first things, I know that's not cheap and three months. If what you're having somewhere, fantastic sponsorship and whatnot, and that's good information for us to have.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Anything further questions to like?
Can I ask now, having had that presentation, Jay, if Jay could just provide a little more commentary about the project? And if he can add, address a couple of those questions, right?
Thank you.
Can you hear us? Not sure. Now, just good questions. All right, as I said, before we go to our end, does anybody have any questions to do with the report?
Councillor Fordham, one of my, just on Cammy's point was wrecked fish, I say. I didn't say that name on the list, but frankly, I'm sorry.
Again, that, that move has been added today on that list, just especially some feedback that he's got from people. And again, their, their concerns, we, we definitely went back about the low-level sort of impact that they were concerned there. That hasn't been scientifically backed or anything like that, that's been noted that as well too, so.
Can you repeat that, sorry? I don't know if the sound was going through and I didn't find.
Yeah, so, so the concerns at the moment of, of those noise, low-impact noises, the studies I've seen on that are from direct offshore, I mean in offshore, so the noise, they're not, they're not on shore. Boys, there's not, no study saying there's no effect comes through from that direction right then.
The work is done on land, there's no studies that support.
That's support that at all. So it's all been sort of marine based, you know, like I said, yeah. Yeah, sorry. I did note that the decision was, oh, there's quite a lot of them, and then the visual page shaking through the rules. I didn't see if they were mentioned anywhere either. They definitely are on there. Again, we haven't told everyone about those reps yet. So she'll start to understand when that all comes in a lot more. And it's not definitive either. We're somewhat like, we open the discussion as we go. Sometimes I go, oh, did you talk to Aunt Mary about this? Oh, no, we're going to get on Aunt Mary as well too, so we do do that as well. Councillor Simpson, if any. Like, have we managed to communicate with Jaden?
Yeah, we're going to get Les to come up to the line, to the table, there's a spare seat there, Les. Not sure if most councillors have met, Les Jones. So Les is our manager of capital works delivery and has been working with Jay in terms of preparing the report and more importantly, liaising with the likes of McMahon in terms of see why they may approach the work. So if there are any other questions, Les can contribute to the response.
Let the members, any questions for Les?
Councillor Fordham. I have one question, just in terms of McMahons. I had, you know, I wasn't initially comfortable with us not following our normal procedures in terms of procurement. But was there any other locally based companies approached? Because you've got the likes of Weyler Earthworks or Wagon Mining and Services and I'm sure could do that job as well.
Just remember, it's a pressure button.
Thanks, Evie. Is that better? Yeah, that should be all about now. Okay. It's not a question whether those organisations couldn't do the job. It's the commercial strictness that we require for the project to be carried out. We've got a very small window of opportunity to get contractors on site. We're still designing this set of works. Is that better? Okay, we'll do this. Sorry. So we are still designing the actual boat works that need to be carried out. And that group will be available to actually commit any activity in terms of procurement until later in March, towards the end of March, which gives that window of opportunity to get a contractor on site. So I'm able to, the commercial conditions that that contractor must accept are being quite extreme. We're talking about the day damage is being quite hefty to make sure that the hunters' force deliberately buy the time we need to open for the cuttlefish. So that's what McMahon's would have approached.
Any further questions, elected members, please? Councillor Simpson.
Did we know who the independent, what I, third party, me, was checking?
It could be someone like recognized one, I suppose, such as government partnership, for example, who does a lot of work for the government as well as other commercial entities that are involved in project cost management on a regular basis, out of emphasis.
Let the members, any further questions, please?
So, yeah. I don't want to repeat, so the question, I don't want to send the questions, but I just wanted to emphasize that by taking an open approach from McMahon, people have full accountability in terms of what they're charging us. So the concerns about their present, we deliver value for money. Checking essentially all of the submissions from McMahon's, we can ensure that they're only filling us what should be filled and at a competitive rate.
Like, yeah. Any further questions, either the CEO or the less? All right, looks like you're stuck now, Liz. Oh, sorry, councillor Campbell.
Is it often, I, I feel very uncomfortable with the fact that we've not done a procurement. It's not, I'm not sure of the question I'm asking here, but is there something that happens often? Is this something that, I'm, I'm struggling to understand the reasoning for this particular one? And why it's so important to get it done so quickly, why it wouldn't be put off, follow the procedure? I'm just, I'm confused as to the delivery, missing that procurement procedure.
Sure, just get your tiny microphone off, please. So council has got a procurement policy that aligns how we procure goods and services. In that policy, it actually provides council through delegations the ability to seek exemptions from the, what you might call the normal processes that we would typically go through. It is not uncommon for councils to apply exemptions in certain circumstances. And as the response I provided to some of the questions earlier in the evening, our procurement policy allows for exemptions to apply in certain circumstances. In this particular case, the two key matters that are at the, the heart of why we're seeking exemption is the timeframe to get the work done and the public risk that we have in terms of not doing the work now and lead that to a later date. As a, I'm a little anagram again, PCBPC, what is it? As a PCBU, so a place, business conducting, like business undertaking, is essentially a legislative requirement or a statement that says that if something happens out of that dive site, if someone's kit gets run over by a motorhome or someone backing a trailer and someone does an investigation and has a look at why that accident occurred, the person that goes to jail is me. Potentially some of the other management staff in a council. So we have a responsibility for ensuring public safety whilst we don't actually have care and control of the land. By default, because no one else is stepping forwards, councillors step forward and we're saying that we must address that public risk. And that is why this matter is being brought to you tonight with the recommendation that we don't go through the procurement process, we seek exemption. It is a valid decision for council to grant such an exemption. Probably technically, I probably could have done it under delegation, but we brought it to council for complete transparency. And the report that's been provided together with the responses we've provided to the questions tonight should give councillors comfort that the process will be robust in terms of delivering both value for money from our investment and addressing the public safety risk that is imminent. The alternative, I'm not sure how well the report actually detailed is, the alternative is if we don't do the work, we will have to spend significant amount of money in terms of traffic control and limiting people going into that dive site. We will have to have someone down on the organizing road actually preventing cars turning onto that road because as it is, as soon as you turn on that road, you, you're, you've got a one-way loop. So the alternative is that we will actually have to limit the number of people coming to the dive site. And that's going to come at a significant cost to council and arguably is probably not going to deliver a good experience for people that may have driven all the way from somewhere to go to the dive site and then told that they can't go in. So, you know, the alternative is, is in our view not really feasible option.
Councillor Fordham.
I guess to comment more than a question, I, I'll be honest, I came into the meeting tonight, delegates of this, I was going to be one of the people who said, no, we can't do this because we haven't followed the procurement process and, you know, it takes a risk to the cuttlefish, given that they're all out there. I think I feel a little bit better now, having heard that there's no risk to the cuttlefish. That's much my biggest concern. And also I feel more comfortable with, in this instance, having an exemption from the normal procurement process because of the risk to people. And having the open book, spunky surveyor and council being able to follow what's spent and why it's spent in such a, I guess, a robust fashion. But I wouldn't like to see too many exemptions to the normal procurement processes.
Thank you, councillor, I was remiss, I should have made sure you just asked a question, don't talk to the motion at this stage because we haven't got one. Any further questions or clarification to any mayor offices? Councillor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Pond.
Yes, I'm just going off what councillor podcast said. I get the safety risk, I get the money procedures, I'm actually quite okay with that. Have we approached any other local businesses to say, can you do this in that timeframe and, and who are those businesses?
Yeah, okay, good. Where, where this might be that we haven't approached in direct.
Councillor Fordham.
Um, I think I'd just like, I'd like to move a different equation when that time comes up on my questions answered.
Well, thank you. I just thought, final, dear honest question. Obviously, as the mayor, and this is the title vote, I don't get to say in this. My only comment would be, I would hate to see us having to come back at a meeting to make a decision to close the dive site during the season. And that the risk factor of not proceeding with the land side works, having been somebody that spent a lot of time out there and seeing the issues. And I do know for a fact that there were some close misses last season. I would hate us to have to close it down by not proceeding with the safety of this aspect. Because anything goes wrong, then everybody will come running for council, so my final comment. We have a notion, or we have a recommendation I made. Do I have anybody that would dare to move and second the recommendation? Councillor Fordham.
I'd like, I'd like to amend it, when do I do that?
If the motion's fine, if nobody moves and second it, you can then have another serve. Right, we do not have a mover or seconder. Is there an alternate motion? Councillor Fordham.
I'd like to move a motion that works for the dive site be scheduled for after the 2024 cuttlefish season. And that council's procurement process as it is, is followed and the temporary measures be taken to keep the site safe. And can I add to that as well? That we investigate the cuddle shuttle and begin looking at ways. That sound, I'll just pause that motion for a second. The cuddle shuttle sounds like it brings the money into Weyler, which isn't happening already, and at the same time makes the dive site safer. So. So that works for the dive site, be scheduled for after 2024 cuttlefish season. Season, cuttlefish season. That council's normal procurement process be followed. Normal procurement process be followed. And that temporary measures be taken to keep the site safe.
Councillor Campbell.
May I speak to the motion?
We haven't got a seconder yet.
Thank you. I think.
No, you wish to second it.
No.
Well, we can't stick to it yet because we've got. Well, we can't speak to it yet because we've got a motion, but no seconded. Yes. And that person's no seconded, do we have an alternate motion? Oh, councillor Popper. Your second. Right, we have a motion, seconded. Councillor Campbell.
I apologise, may I? I'm still learning the procedures. And I'm not sure if this is the time when I should be speaking to the motion and if I'm doing this right. So I apologise if I've got it wrong. And I think what the concern is that there's not been a procurement process. And there's not been a tender for local people to have a shot at it. Is there a way that we as a council can approach these locals and give them the opportunity to put in a tender at this point? And I think that's a concern, not just the councilmen who are sitting here tonight, that are concerned with how that could be seen. But also for members of the public that are seeing things going up and down in the process.
Right, so that is, we now have a motion that's been moved and seconded, which confirms the action after the season. I'm guessing you see that.
Just for the benefit of councillors, we now have a motion on the table. It is now subject to debate. So you either need to speak in favour of the motion or you need to speak against the motion if you don't agree with the motion that's on the table. Once there's been debate on this matter, we'll be put to vote. If it's successful, then the resolution of council that administration will implement will be the motion that's on the table. So you can speak to ask other questions, but it does take up some of your time. And now's the time to be debating whether you support what's on the table or not.
Councillor Boarder.
Does that mean I speak to the motion now, Justin? Or do I wait for any debate to start?
Yeah, so as the leader, you should have the opportunity to speak first. And then after everyone's had the opportunity to speak on this, you get a short summing up to re-prosecute your views after having heard what the other councillors have said.
I'd like to speak to the motion. So in essence, the reason why I'm putting this motion forward, and I appreciate all the information from the council executive and from B and C. For me, it is cuttlefish first, procurement second, and economics and tourism third. And it's interesting and ironic that I think the idea of a cuddle shuttle actually achieves both cuttlefish safety and also more tourism dollars perhaps staying inside the city of Waila. And they earn those dollars to stay in Waila from the tourists and the locals that are going out to the dive site. I think it also encourages more access from the locals and people coming to Waila. So on that basis, I'm putting the motion.
Good, councillor. Any further comments? Councillor, it's on.
Okay. I'm looking at this motion and I'm. I agree with, I guess I'm almost making another motion, proposing another motion. I don't know that if we're not, if the works are not going to have any impact on the cuttlefish this season or ongoing, I don't know that we're in a position to put off the immediate works that need to be done. That's my first comment. My second comment would be that I think there is definitely value in approaching the other locals potentially. You said you're aware of the locals who could potentially do the work. Fairly simple process to get in touch with them, so can you do the work? Would you do it in the timeframe? Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pond.
My opinion is that you're quite similar. I think with the safety issues that have been addressed, I don't think we can wait till next season. I think what we actually, most of us have an issue with is just going straight to the one person. I think we need to give our community a fair opportunity to put their opinions forward. We need to reach out and ask, is this possible? Can you do this in the timeframe? If no, that's okay, we go with the company that can do it in the timeframe. But because we've had safety issues raised, I feel uncomfortable leaving this until next season. It's more the procurement process. We need to reach out to others. That's just how I feel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pond. One, this is considered when it comes to the. Any further comments? Because we do have a nice long. What? Take that.
Just to clarify, given the last few speakers, the non-municipal units in terms of the booking to seek to influence the council's decision, if the concerns that the city clears around procurement aspect. The original motion was in pass, so council could consider those parts and could give us a directive as administration that we want us to approach other companies as part of the procurement process. So I just say that as an alternative to the most available, which is defer everything. It could be that we get instructions from the council for the resolution that we attend to that issue, which seems to be one of the main concerns.
Yes.
Thanks. Just in terms of potentially deferring the work and relying on a cuddle shuttle. There is at the moment not a turning circle available or a top-off point to do that. So if these works aren't done, we could arrange a cuddle shuttle. But it means driving down Cullis Strab and then driving all the way up the long way down the coast to do that work.
Thank you very much. Councillor English.
Inside one of you. And what Mr. Smith said then, the transport, aggression access.
Thank you, councillor. Any further discussions? Oh, councillor, councillor, I'm going with Deputy Mayor Pond and Councillor English as well. I think that's probably the best way to do it. As I said, we just take that into account in voting office. If there's no discussion. Oh, sorry, this councillor Boarder closing. A motion.
Just to read right here, the safety of the cuttlefish, I'm not 100% comfortable with it. And I think that needs to come first. I think in this way, this law, I appreciate that the numbers of tourists are increasing, which is all good. And I'm not trying to hold that process up at all. I believe that this is the best way forward, hence the motion. And I'll leave it there.
Thank you, councillor. Right, have a motion. I'll just repeat it just to your memory. The works for the dive site are scheduled for after the 2024 cuttlefish season. Council's normal procurement process be followed. And the temporary measures be taken to keep the site safe. I'll ask those in favour. Again. Motion is lost. Does any other councillor wish to move an alternate motion? Deputy Mayor Pond.
I would like to change according to the CEO's advice, that we can add in there that local companies can be approached to see if they're able to complete the work in that timeframe.
As a suggestion, if I may.
Yeah.
If you want to change, I'm afraid.
Yes, please.
To remove the words appropriate point and tolls. And also McDonald's as well. Can I suggest, from a day-to-day point of view, and how that we limit the number of companies that we approach?
Absolutely.
So can we have some words along the lines that council approach three companies?
Yes.
And then I think the rest of the motion can stand as it is.
Absolutely. And just to talk to that, I just see this, I mean, we say this all the time. To me, this passes the pub test. We are being very fair. We're giving everyone the opportunity to put their hat in the ring. And we will make the best decision with the community's money.
Yes. I don't think, take advice is that it's not going to be a full tender process. The words that I've used is that we approach because we've got limited time. But the normal tender approach requires us to have full specifications, full documentation. Now provides a significant period of time for neighbour companies to submit their response.
Yeah, so we will approach and get information to inform council's decision, but it won't through the full tender process that we would normally undertake. If councillor understands and accepts that, I'm happy to clarify further if needed.
Thank you very much. I'm happy with that.
We have a motion. Do I have a speaker? Take it, councillor Campbell. Do any further discussions? Do we get any further?
Great, thank you.
Right, we have a motion, votes, move or second it. I'll put the motion both in favour. Again. Carry it in and swear. Thank you for all of your time and deliberation. I now speak for the meeting involved in the meeting to defer our next item 12.2 to the great confidential section of our. And I have an indication that the members are happy to admit secretly to put that back. Underhangs, thank you. So we'll move on to item 13, committee reports, they're renewed. Item 14, reports from council offices, 14.1, the office of the chief executive. 14.1.1, CEO's accident report. I'll defer to the CEO. I presume he would have been taken as redneck questions.
There you go. The reports, as presented, as the members indicated, want to be taken as red. Just wanted to bring to the elected members' attention that we have scheduled a workshop on the August March in relation to our annual sustainable budget during the last meeting of the board and the risk committee.
CEO, of his report, yes, yes, councillor Boarder. During that, the future airport as a future regional freight company, people that tour around and sell in China.
Yeah, there was the initial meeting, great, dronomics. Look at autonomous planes. So they are currently flying planes over in Europe. And they're completely looking at where they might establish their restraint presence. Their focus is mainly in terms of the movement of freight. And obviously, Waila, given what's happening around our area and location, could be a potential desirable location for them. So it was initial conversation just to share with us what, you know, where they're up to with their current plan.
Listen, thank you. Thank you, councillor. Is there any further requests? Do I have a second to receive CEO's report? Deputy Mayor Pond, second to councillor Campbell, I'll put the motion to those in favour. Again. Harry, thank you. Item 14.1.2, in relation to another council meeting that's required to implement this, such a long agenda. You have a motion there, councillor Boarder, you're moving. Deputy Mayor Pond, your seconding, I'll put the motion to those in favour. Again. Harry, thank you. 14.2, officer's ordering reports, 14.2.1, the annual review, the confidential order. As you'll be aware, it's happened every year, the which waters can be released. Now, the process of this is that any of the items you wish to discuss, we will have to go into confidential. It depends whether you have any conflict of interest that you need to also declare or any particular items that you wish to discuss. It is not quite so straightforward as accepting or rejecting on hold. If the CEO might have some better instructions.
Yeah, so in the first instance, the mayor will ask if any councillors want to discuss any of the items that are currently on our confidential register. If we have any discussion, we will need to go into confidence to have that discussion. So that will be the first question that the mayor puts to the elected member group. If there is no questions, we'll go through a process of dealing with recommendations, essentially in blocks. So councillor, which is the first one, as an example. 31, was that the first?
Councillor English, seeing items 31, 39 and 59.
So what we would do is move all the items from 1 to 30, have resolution to accept the recommendations as per the report. Councillor English will then leave the room for item number 31, deal with that. And I think just for ease, we'll just do it in sequential order instead of trying to, you know, go backwards and forwards. Just checking that everyone understands the process. So first question is, do you want to discuss any items? And the second one then is work through the process and deal with the items with the exclusion of other member or members who may have conflict of interest on that item.
So as my autotipist just said, does anybody have any quest, any items that they wish to discuss? Right, we're over hurdle one. Now, are there any items other than those that we're aware of with councillor English that anybody feels they have a conflict with and shouldn't be part of? Oh, sorry, yes, we've got 84. Are they the only ones? Nobody else has got? Councillor Boarder.
I missed my opportunity to start with my son, very grown, and that's all as well, so I have the same.
Sorry.
I missed my opportunity to start. My sons are enrolled at the same school and orders. So I have the same conflict that councillor Westman has.
Right, thank you, councillor. Can I just respond to that? Having a member attend the school does not constitute a conflict of interest. It's only if you're on the government body of the school and then have a influence in terms of decision made by the school. So whilst I have a seat.
So whilst I have a perceived conflict of interest, you don't need to leave the room because there's no real conflict of interest.
Not, I'm not on the board, so delete what I just said.
Thank you. I thought I saw a red light there. Right, in that case. I'll go ahead and start my first, I'll be putting up plates.
Okay, yes, so this is items one through thirteen. If we can have a mover and a seconded, bearing in mind that the minutes will show every single resolution that is contained in annuity A as opposed to endorsing annuity A. So the minutes will be many pages long. But yes, so we're doing items thirteen, one to thirty for all members.
Councillor Simpson, are you moving? Moving. And councillor Borden, seconding? Right. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Again. Carrie. Thank you.
So councillor Ringless, if you would like to leave the meeting, we will now do item thirty-one. Perhaps if we do item thirty-nine and fifty-nine all together while councillor Ringless is out of the room to say going in and out. So this is now for items thirty-one, thirty-nine and fifty-nine, if we can have a mover and a seconded.
Move councillor Waterman. Sorry, Westerman. Second to councillor Borden.
Yes.
I'll put the motion, those in favour. Again. Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
My apologies councillor, it's been a long day. Good, councillor, right? That's him. Right. All right, we will continue. The next block is.
The next block is items thirty, thirty-two to thirty-eight, we've just done that. And. Oh, thank you, items thirty-two to thirty-eight.
Right, move councillor Todd. Second to councillor Borden, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Again. Harry. Thank you.
The next items are forty to fifty-eight.
Move councillor Borden. Second to councillor Westerman. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Again. Carrie. Thank you.
Now we have items sixty, thirty-three.
Good, for four. Second to councillor Westerman. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Again. Carrie.
Next we have item eighty-four. Definitely lots of previously, which therefore. Viewers to whether or not this particular one can remain. Right, so we'll do the next block, including item eighty-four to the one hundred and three.
Good. Second. And this. This was. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Again. Carrie. Thank you. Again. Carrie. Forty, forty-three, forty-four, first, somebody having to propose to submit from review. And if my eyes place though, I'm very well presented to report, review, reports and all to give us great. If you have a recommendation. Councillor Borden, are you moving the recommendation?
Can I make a comment as well? Yep, I just want to acknowledge that I think we were all feeling ready for the report, but it was really comprehensive. And I just want to make a point of all who are listening, because I've read some of the comments from the surveys themselves. And what some feedback to be taken on board. And I think the irony is that that is the whole idea of the survey. So just the comprehensive nature, and I know that's not the only event that the council events team do that sort of thing. So I think it's worth highlighting that, that the events team, the council are responsible, at least they think, to get insight into the community as to what the community wants and raise awareness to the events on a very tight schedule with a very small team. And I think they do a fantastic job, and I'll prove it as well.
Yes, certainly agree with the councillor.
So we have a mover, councillor Todd, are you seconding? In that case, we have a motion, move to the seconded. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Again. Carrie. Thank you. On forty, forty-three, point three, revoking community land status on lot one twenty-six Horseshoe Road on the Clonan. You have a report for you? Would somebody care to move it or are there questions first? Councillor Borden?
No questions, just moving it.
You're moving it. Councillor Todd, taking it. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Again. Carrie. Thank you. Item fourteen, point three, point four. Take that as read at this stage, removal of individuals at lot one twenty-six Agathaire Road. Councillor Borden moving, councillor Todd seconding. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Again. Carrie. Thank you. Item fifteen, information reports, fifteen point one, one. The mayor's request, again. All of happy to the man, don't we still, we can keep moving, doing everything the hour is getting on. It's certainly never hip to ask the outside counsel. Deputy Mayor Pond, happy to see you. Thank you. Councillor Borden, seconding. Thank you, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Again. Carrie. Thank you. Item sixteen, notice of the motion, we have nil. Item seventeen, questions on notice, we have nil. Item eighteen, questions without notice, do we have any questions without notice? Thank you, we keep moving it. Ah. All right.
Just a general question.
Yes.
In terms of the industrial side, do we still have the cryptocurrency data center operating or are they defunct?
For the mayor, as far as I'm aware, they're still operating.
Yeah. Right, moving on to item nineteen, motions without notice, do we have any motions without notice? I've no red lights. Thank you, I'll be moving. Item twenty, confidential items, so we will now move into confidential, would somebody care to move? At second, if we go into confidential, move councillor Borden, second to deputy mayor Pond. If we go into confidential. Which means, I do have to say to the gallery, thank you for your attendance. Been a long night. We'll see you again.